Okay, wow. Good evening. Welcome to the West River Modified Union Education District Meeting. We can call this meeting to order now at 7:02. And we have, under, the first order of business is the additions and corrections to the agenda, and I just wanted to, we need to move an item up to the top of the agenda because we're going to lose our legislative, our legislator to some legislative business in the next 45 minutes. So we can move Emily to the, to the beginning and let her give us the legislative update, if there's no problem about that. And then we'll move through everything else and get to the, get to the presentation that you're all here to see of what the new district may look like. You want to?
Sure.
Sure. Do you need, yeah, you probably do. It's live.
I want to make sure you can all hear me because it's so scintillating. These guys have heard this a few times because not an awful lot has changed from what I've been reporting to this board and to the Wyndham Central Board. But the latest news out of Montpelier is that we're still at odds with the administration over our education funding and state budget and tax, tax bill. So the latest was, I'm sure everybody heard, that we were unable to override the veto of the budget. So we're back sort of to square one, trying really hard to come up with a plan. The plan now is for, since the House has twice tried to pass a budget with quite a lot of support in fact, the, since both of those were vetoed and we couldn't override them, the veto, the Senate is now work, up there working. So I'll be heading up again on Friday, trying to look over what the Senate's doing, watch the news tomorrow. I'm sure you'll all hear the new plan. I just read a little bit of something about it, which is, sounds like it's headed for another veto. So we'll see what the House can do. We need to work very closely with the governor on this, but I just want to make my own personal statement about this. I am feeling very strongly that this is a very powerful and forward attack on public education, and we need to stand strong as much as we can to make sure that public education isn't taken apart throughout this process. And it's not that we're not sensitive about tax rates, but, and we are, in fact, the latest proposal that was vetoed had leveled the residential property tax rates. It was just the non-residential and commercial property tax rates that we hadn't come to an agreement yet about. So I do think we need to be conscious of trying to find a compromise. The last thing we need is a government shutdown. None of us want a government shutdown, and I'm determined that we won't have one. But it's also very important that we respect the voters who pass budgets all over the state. Ninety-seven percent of the budgets passed on the first try this year. And if we do level tax rates, that means, for everyone, that means that we will find ourselves in probably a $45 to $55 million hole next year, just like we are in a hole this year. So we're trying very hard to make sure that doesn't happen. There's a lot of different options that we can still take, and we're hoping to come up with one this week. So the House will be in session, the Senate's in session tomorrow, the House is in session on Friday, and hopefully this special session will end soon and positively for public education.
Thanks, Emily. Anybody have any quick, any questions about that? I mean, I appreciate the keeping us up to date. Okay, moving right along, I, I'm remiss, I, we probably should have introduced the board to the audience ahead of time, I'm sorry. My name is Joe Winrich, I'm the Chair of this board, I represent the town of Townsend. And we'll just go one way and then the other.
I'm Christina Robinson, I represent Jamaica.
Trish Scott, Townsend.
Laurie Garland, Wyndham Central.
Stephanie Beatty Hancock, Wyndham Central.
Hi, Jed McCusick, Wyndham Central.
I'm Bill Hanton, Superintendent.
Al Lawson, Vice Chair, Townsend.
Ken McFadden, Newfane.
Emily Long, Newfane.
Lindsay Bertram, Newfane.
Mike Foley, Townsend.
One more, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I think I probably got you. Mike Foley and Trish Scott actually are at-large members, they reside in Townsend, but they were elected by the entire West River electorate. Gotcha? Okay. All right. So that, that pretty much covers, oh, we're also going to add under new business, we need to have a quick discussion about changing our retreat date. Apparently we've had some issues with people being able to make it on that day. Five-minute conversation. But the next item on the agenda then would be members of the public. So if you're here to see the plan and research the plan, I would ask that you hold your questions until we actually see it. But if you're here for some other reason or you want to address something else, now would be your time. Mr. Hagel, and please, before you speak, identify yourself for the audience.
Okay, do you want me to take that?
Or that one. One or the other, because they don't hear you in the back.
In light of the recent preliminary recommendations from on high in Montpelier, I've got some questions about procedure. Should Wyndham be forced to join? First question, do the voters of the current member towns get to vote yes or no on Wyndham's admission to the district? And if so, what happens if they vote no?
The, the voters of the district don't get to vote on whether or not Wyndham is admitted, this board itself gets to vote on whether or not Wyndham is admitted.
Based on the language of the recommendation from the Secretary of Education, that would be my understanding.
I believe the language from the Secretary of Education asks the board of West River to accept the membership of Wyndham. I would have to double-check that, but I will write down your question and work to get an answer for the board.
Okay, using that as an answer, and I'm not happy with that fact, I don't think it's at all fair to the voters of the towns, since they went ahead and they voted to do this, they made a decision, Wyndham is playing games. Should the board vote to let Wyndham join, can you alter the Articles of Agreement when they join?
Altering the Articles of Agreement would take a vote of the member towns. So the board cannot alter those, you know, prior to admitting Wyndham or as a condition of admitting Wyndham. That would have to be done by a vote of the entire towns, you know.
Thank you.
That's it? Anybody else? All right, so, now for what you've all been waiting for, the presentation of the first look at the West River Education District Plan. Plan, is that on? All of a sudden it stopped echoing in my ear. So during this, the board's actually going to move down and sit in these chairs so that we can see the presentation too, because we haven't seen this yet either. There are note cards just at the back, and you can probably get some. We would ask that any questions you have during the presentation, you write down on the note cards, there's a box to collect them. Basically, during the presentation, I'm going to be watching the presentation, we're not going to have any way to really recognize anybody to answer questions, so hold all your questions to the end of the presentation, even if it's a clarifying question, we can address those at the end of the presentation. You know, the board is going to be doing the same thing, writing down their questions, and then we'll address it all at the end of the, at the end of the presentation. Mostly, what we're going to be able to answer tonight will be the clarifying questions because there aren't any other big answers. But anyway, on with the presentation.
You got the clicker for me? Thank you, brother. So while the board is sitting down, again, I'm Bill Hanton, I'm the Superintendent of Wyndham Central, and I just want to say that my team and I at the Central Office very much appreciate the professional challenge that the board asked us to do in crafting a draft plan of what the West River Education District could look like. It wasn't an easy task, we had to consider a lot of factors, but I'm glad that the board gave us the opportunity to share something with you today, to begin a conversation between the board and the community and to find out where, where we want to go education. I'm opening with this quote because I think we're in a time of change, and that can be highly stressful, can make people very anxious, but it's also an opportunity to reflect and to think about how we do business, and is there a way for us to reorganize ourselves to create a new normal that will be to the benefit of our students? And then lastly, before I begin, I just want to again thank the board for their emphasis on, the design had to be about looking through the lens of a student. And so that gave us really good guidance on creating what we're going to share with you today. So just a little history so we're all caught up. After Act 46 passed, the board at the WCSU level started meeting on a regular basis, more often than they used to, to discuss what could be possible at the SU level, and through that, they decided to go for an exploratory committee for the entire SU. They had a consultant that came down, organized meetings, studied what some possibilities might be at the, at the larger SU level, and they really focused on maximizing the benefits for students, for taxpayers, and for communities. After that was done, the Leland and Gray towns created their own study committee, and they had representatives from Wyndham and Brookline and Newfane and Townsend and Jamaica. And they met during the summer and fall of 2016, and again, they were looking for student learning opportunities, efficiency, effectiveness, and what would the financial implications be if those first two things happened. When the study committee finished, they created some findings, and the findings were the beginning of our team looking at a foundation for what we were going to create, because the study committee was the first group of citizens of West River that were thinking about what the future could look like. And I highlighted a couple things that our organization right now may be adequate for the present, but it's not well-suited to meet the demands into the future. And it was very apparent during these conversations that the committee really wanted to focus on the strengths of who we are as a community, build upon the connections that we've already made through working together, obviously through Leland and Gray, but also just as a community. But again, getting back to the point of looking for opportunities for student learning and organizational effective, oh, effectiveness, efficiency. Then we elected our board. We had nine people elected for the West River Board on the first run, and then we added two at-large, and then the board worked with a consultant for about five to six months to craft a vision statement that they were using as the basis of everything that will come forward. We always are going to point to our vision statement as that's where we want to be. And again, I would just highlight that it's focused on the student, it's through the lens of what is the benefit for students. And then after the board had their vision statement, they created some very specific goals. And these goals, along with the vision statement and the work of the Leland and Gray Study Committee, were really our marching orders as a group to create what we're going to share with you today. Again, you can see fluid through all of those goals is the importance of the student. So while you get to read that quote, let me just tell you what we've been doing for two years to prepare for this. So we were part of a statewide study through the District Management Group to look at our particular SU as well as the entire state, and look for ways that we can structure ourselves to provide better opportunities for students in their learning. We also participated in the Integrated Field Review, which came to our district through 25 educational professionals, they did surveys, they did forums with parents, with students, with administrators, they looked at our budgets, they looked at our schedules, and then they gave us recommendations and commendations about things that we could do to organize ourselves, different systems we could put in place to be a more effective unit for our students. I'm going to share with you now two possible options for that structure. The envisionment of those two are under the guidelines of multiple campuses and one community. So Option A. Option A envisions four campuses where you'd have an early learning center for three- and four-year-olds at the current Jamaica location. This would, this is envisioned to have one three-year-old class, two four-year-old classes, it would host our essential early learning team, which involves our coordinator and a specialist, along with a certified occupational therapy assistant, so that we could help students at the youngest part of their life get ready for an educational system both socially and emotionally. This is envisioned that it would be at the very minimum a full-day program, but we'd really like to make it a 7:30 to 5:00 program. I think that's very possible for us. The primary school would be at the current Townsend location, and that will have two of every grade, two kindergarten, two first grade, two second grade. Currently, our class size in our elementary school range from 15 to 17. Under this model, it would range from 16 to 21. We average between 33 and 41 kids in age three to age four, uh, to fourth grade, so as those kids move up. The intermediate school would be third, fourth, and fifth, and again, you'd have two teachers in third, two teachers in fourth, two teachers in fifth. We would have the sixth graders join the other students at Leland and Gray to create a natural middle school of sixth, seventh, and eighth. The Common Core Next Generation Science Standards are all organized by bands, K-2, 3-5, 6-8, and 9-12, so this structure would match that. It's also very good to cluster students in developmentally similar times where you can take advantage of how you would organize your schools. So that is the structure of Option A. Option B. Option B is very similar to Option A. The difference between A and B is that you would move the three- and four-year-olds into the current K through two school, and the board does not have the option to make Option B happen. This is only possible if the community of Jamaica decided that they no longer wanted to run an educational building for the, for education of pre-K through 12 students. When we were looking at our design and our target and our goals, the board had a very robust discussion about what it would look like if one town was to decide that they no longer wanted to operate an educational institution in their world, so I wanted to make sure I provided what it would look like. Again, you still have your bands of K-2, 3-5, 6-8, and 9 through 12. Before we get to the details about what are the instructional implications, the special education implications, the financial implications, there's going to be a lot of detail, and so we're going to hand out our presentation so everybody has a personal copy right now, so you guys can make notes, you can think about it. At this time, while we're passing it out, I would really encourage you to think about questions, clarifying questions that you might have to me, might have to the board, so that after this is done, you can get your things clarified.
Let's see. So now I'd like to introduce our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Jed McCusick, who's going to go over some instructional implications based on the two ops we were sharing.
So as the handouts are getting around the room, I'll just get started. I'll start over here, but my notes are over there, my glasses are over there, so we'll see how this goes. So Bill, when we started out, and the board gave us this work to do, gave us this challenge, I initially did what my instincts are, which was I went for research, and I went to other school districts, and I started looking at what other programs were out there, and then it really opened up for me that if, using our language, if we're looking through the lens of a student, it changed for me. All of a sudden, I'm really excited, and I felt like this was really fun for me, geeky little world, this was really fun. Because I started thinking about like, wow, what could we do for students? What could we take all the strengths of our SU and our district and build on those? So I put these together as categories, I have two slides, the first are instructional implications that are benefits, and the second are what are considered to be the possibilities and challenges of this new infrastructure. So I'll start, I'm going to let you know that I might go ahead and come back a little bit, because they're so interrelated, even as I talk about things from a teacher's perspective or a school's perspective, I can't get away from thinking of what it would be like for a student experiencing these things. So I will start with a focused curriculum instruction. Bill talked a little bit already about our Common Core standards, that we have these natural clusters. We know that in grade-level bands, that, in my words, the way I usually think about it, is we have skills introduced, we have skills practiced, and skills mastered, and so when we have those teachers working together in like a K to two band, it allows us time to cycle back through those. We do that really well in our school district, I believe our teachers do that well, but we have other challenges because of the structure in place. Single-grade classrooms. So I know some of our, we work out single-grade classrooms, but Townsend and Jamaica have multi-age or multi-grade. When I think about single-grade classrooms, and I think about a little bit of a larger class size, I'm, I'm going to share a story. I have a very good friend who, this is probably going back 10 years, dating myself a little bit, when her daughter, with whom I was very close, started school, she was in a multi-grade classroom in one of our schools actually, in this SU, and she was one of three girls in her class, eight kids in her grade level, she didn't fit in, she just didn't. And it was, the other two girls had grown up together, did daycare together, they were just really tight, their families. So she spent through her fourth grade year really isolated, and really having challenges that wouldn't have been there should she have had a larger population and more kids. I mean, we did, the school did everything they could to try to get her connected with older kids, younger kids, and like that, but it was really hard. So when I look at this man, when I look at this, I think of her. I think of her in a single-grade classroom with two grades, with different kids, more children, more opportunities for her to grow academically and socially, and I think about that for our kids. From the instructional point, I know how hard our teachers work. Right now, when we think about math and literacy, if you're thinking about math being recommended at the elementary level to be 70 minutes a day, and literacy to be 90, and that's before we add in intervention and support and enrichment, and then we're asking our multi-grade teachers to do that twice a day, double it up. Don't forget social studies and science and field trips and recess and time for everything else. When I think about a single-grade classroom, I think about what it allows the teacher to be able to do, to focus on that. Then the most exciting thing for me in this category is the two classrooms per grade level. So all, all of a sudden, now you have someone across the hall from you. You have someone who's teaching the same content as you, you have someone who's working with the same age group, you have this opportunity to share groups. Now, if you're both teaching literacy at the same time, you now have 40 students that you can spread out into different groups and differentiate, and give enrichment and give support and intervention, and you can move those social groups around, and you can move the academics around. I'll get to intervention in a little bit too, but I get kind of excited about that idea of like, all hands on deck and being able to have kids move around. Two classes, two classes per grade level, there's possibilities there, and I'll jump ahead a little bit, but I think about a third-grade science unit, like, one resources, but you could build two third-grade classrooms, you could do a really in-depth science classroom and do, do a hands-on lab, and your teacher across the hall could be doing math or social studies, and you could flip-flop, and kids could have this enriched experience where people really are excited about their content, going back and forth. Or you could share resources, you can both do science units, but you'd have someone as a teacher to collaborate with. As an SU, I think we do a really good job, we have grade-level meetings and labs, and we have our PD days where we have, as an elementary, pre-ked, seven or eight, depending where school you're in, we get time together, but it's not enough. And it's not the same as being able to walk across the hall and ask a teacher like, oh, do you have a good way for me to teach this? Or I'm really struggling with this behavior right now. And being able to have that collaboration, that is around your content. So, the next, I'm going to say grade six exploratories. When I think about the middle school, sixth graders at Leland and Gray will have access then, if they were here, they would have access to music, to band, to art, to technology, to counseling, and to the, like, foreign language that they, they have parts of in the elementary schools, but not in the consistent way that they could have it here, and the depth of knowledge that I think that they could build on here. I think about exploratory teachers and how hard they work. Some of them go to, what, three schools, two schools, two districts, travel, it's really hard to put art on a card, it just is. So I think for students that this is an opportunity for them to grow and get these pieces. Okay, so, okay, I think I'll move on to developmentally appropriate learning. Thinking about flexible grouping, those natural clusters, both from a student's needs, developmental needs, we know a lot from Vermont Early Learning Standards, where our pre-K students, our three- and four-year-olds are a different population, and their needs and how you instruct and work with those students looks very different than you work with a fifth and sixth grader. I think right now, when I look at our schools, we do, again, a great job trying to meet the needs of all those students in one building, but we all know that that 12-year-old looks a lot different than that seven-year-old, and the needs of that seven-year-old are different than the 12-year-old. And in our small, small schools, trying to sometimes meet all those needs at once and have a schedule and a system to meet all those needs can, is challenging. We're doing it, and lots of schools do it, but we do it really lean, and we share a lot of resources that way. I think about talking with a counselor, and having a student come in, think of a young student, a male, that needed friendship group, like, just needed practice, like, how do you talk to your friends? Like, how do you play on the playground? Like, you're a pre-adolescent tween, and you're kind of awkward, and I get awkward, so like, how do I help that kid? Well, if you're a friendship group and you have eight students in your class, who's he going to practice his friendship group with? It's just a challenge. I mean, we're doing it, but it's not the same as if you had 40 students in a grade, where you could bring kids in and out and practice these skills. Just, so let me think about developmentally. School routines and practices are real positive that I can think about, is that, you know, if you're a three-to-five, or a pre-k, or a middle school, you can focus on what you know about your population. So we know a lot of the work that Leland and Gray is doing in the middle school, like, they're involved with the Terran Institute, they're learning about the adolescent mind. What is that type of learning? Like, I call it the gradual release of these kids, that they come in and it's like, you help them set up with advisory, you show them how to do your notebook, you do that 42 times a day, like, how to get your notebook right. And then eventually, they get to a point where they can independently use their locker and get down the hallway and probably touch every ceiling on the way down, a doorway, but they're getting there, and that group of teachers is working with them and understands them, and that's their focus. So if you're able to do that as a middle school, and then as a K to two, and we know about their academic needs, and we know about their developmental needs, you can really focus on that and be that much stronger. I talk about social groups, parent involvement too, working on different levels. I think we can design our, I get so excited, our activities and things we do as a school, I'm thinking about PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, like, if you are targeted to an audience, we know that what we expect for a kindergarten Like, if you are targeted to an audience, we know that what we expect for a kindergarten to do walking down the hallway, we have different expectations for what a 6th grader should do, because they have more mature, well, they mostly have more maturity and can handle that, but we want to be able to give them the right skills for that. So as a school, and as this whole piece, like, the parents can be involved in a different way, and the school's structure is involved in a way that's meeting those needs of those kids. So I can talk a lot about academics, but I also think this is a really important piece, is to put these together. I also, one of the things that draws, that's good. One of the things that draws us to WCSU, and what I know is a strength of ours, is our parent and student connections, and how much our students feel like family here. So to have that in elementary school, for that cluster, and even with counseling groups, that's fine. I also know there's times when kids don't always connect with the adult. And if you are in a multi-grade classroom, or a multi-grade school, per level, like, 2 3rd grades, you get an option. So I think from a parent's perspective, I think from a kid's perspective, and from a teacher's perspective. Like, sometimes, like, I might connect more with you than I do with you. So I'm gonna learn more from you than you, because that's just who I am. Like, that's how my learning style fits. And that's not, you're not bad, and you're not good, or vice versa. It's just that it gives you more opportunity for your child to connect with the adult, a different adult, in a different way. That said, some students really thrive in multi-grade, and having that 2-year connection is great. And sometimes, that's really tough. Now, if your kid didn't like Mr. Smith, and ended up with Mr. Smith for 2 years, those are tough 2 years. Or they love Mrs. Jones, and now they don't get Mrs. Jones again, and no one else will ever live up to those expectations. Okay, so thinking about teaching practices, I thought, I mentioned the cross-grade level, but I'm also thinking about, you know, how you differentiate instruction, and how you, if you have your literacy blocks at the same time, and your math blocks at the same time, teachers can collaborate, they can do units together. You have that professional sharing of knowledge and feedback. Shared resources, again, thinking like a science kid, you can flip-flop, but also, instead of everyone buying the kit throughout the SU, or everyone buying the manual, you do get to share those. And just, I see our teachers have these conversations, and learn from each other, and unpack things, and get ideas from each other. So in these grade level bands, we have more opportunity to do that. Assessment tools and planning, kind of the same idea. Looking at the data, what does the data mean? What can I do about it? How can I help the student? I want it to be better. What have you tried? What can I try? Let's do it together. And then focus professional development. As an SU, we have moved from more of a broad, we've been doing mathematics for elementary, and next year, we're moving into K, pre-K to 2, and 3 to 6. Professional development in those areas, so we're trying to hone that in. But I think about how cool it would be if one of these locations was like, "Yeah, 3 through 5, we'd really like to focus on social studies. Can you come work with us?" And I'd be like, "Yes." I'd go to one building with everybody there, and we could all work together on that. And we could bring PD in by building level. And if we want to do really literacy instruction, like we've been doing through Expansion Program this year, with pre-K, we have a group there, you know? It's just, there's a lot of opportunity, because we're spread out, because we all have lots of obligations and time commitments. Being in the same building makes that a little bit, well, makes it easier, makes it more accessible. Okay, so my, one of the things that I've been thinking a lot about is our interventionists, and I mean this for special education, for title, but also for classroom teachers. Our interventionist right now might serve pre-K to 6. So that means I have a teacher who's probably not even full-time, who's supposed to have all the content for 7 grade levels in every, in every content subject area. And they're supposed to be the expert that helps all the teachers go through that. So when we designed this idea, we drafted this idea based on the vision of the board, is we said, through this, we could have an interventionist that works with K to 2. We could have an interventionist that works with 3 to 5. We have an interventionist that works with 6 to 8. Or we can have an interventionist focus on literacy that would flip-flop, and math would flip-flop. But we could hone in that time. And then that person could work with data meetings, they could be in the school. And when you have common planning time, and you have joint time when you're doing the literacy block, thinking about that, now your interventionist is there. So you've got 2 teachers, 40 kids, parent educator, interventionist, in groups, and all of a sudden, we even might even get to do some enrichment during that time, which would be fantastic. Side note, if our schools are larger, I believe that we should be able to apply for grant funds through Title 1 and 2A to get interventionists in our schools and have that paid for again, which we know has been an issue for us this year, so. Okay, so for schools, I mentioned that. Efficient use of time, thinking about how we schedule our day, and how kids rotate through that. Again, intervention being an option, sorry if I went over that too quickly. But intervention is something, I'm sorry, enrichment is something that in a tiered model, we don't always get to have that time for. So I'm hoping this, this format would allow for more of that. Equity, and this came through everything we were doing. It just kept coming back to, do our students get the same, or similar, or equal, fair educational experiences at each of our schools? Not from any fault of our teachers, not from the fault of our principals, but from the act of our schedules and our system. Are we limiting our students in some ways? I do believe that this model makes it more equitable. It does mean more for explorators, it means more access to resources that aren't so tied to which building you're in, current building. Alright, so the next piece was possibilities, because I got really excited about this. So I think I've mentioned a few of these. How you do behavior in schools, like, how you address behavior positively, preventatively. If you're a PBIS school, and you are the principal or on that committee, you know that it can be really challenging to have a celebration for your school that entertains both your 5-year-old and that 12-year-old. So like, I would say my public could really organize around positive behaviors in our schools in this way, that are developmentally appropriate. Interventionists, I mentioned, I get excited about that. Project Exploring, I had experience working when I was teaching at a middle school. And we were able to, because we have these teams to approach, we were able to do these community disciplinary units. We did all this project-based stuff where we're out in the community, and we had it all connected. And what we found is how it worked is we had enough students and enough teachers that we could bring 80 kids at a time. And I think that can be challenging when you have a smaller school, but it's a possibility. I'm not saying it could, I'm saying it could happen. Teachers and principals will decide that in their buildings. I mentioned collaboration and communication amongst the teachers and the kids. Middle school flexibility. So I talked about the gradual release, thinking about the Tarrant Institute, all this amazing work that Leland and Gray is doing to build this program up, and to have that be even more rich, and more accessible, more kids into that. And professional development, I talked about. Challenges, instructional programming will be a challenge. This is new. It means that we might be learning new things. It means that if you have one school that has always got a program, that might feel different when we get together as grade levels, or as a unified district, you know, within that K to 2 or that 3 to 5. I'm thinking about like foundations, and I'm thinking about Engage Uorn, some of the programs that some of our schools are using. There, it's a challenge because they'll have to make decisions, and people have to get on board together. Which I don't have a doubt that we can do, I'm just saying it's something we have to think about. Challenges are, when I say multi-grade, some students really thrive in multi-grade, and that will be a loss for some of our students and our teachers. Transitions, now your student may have 2 or more elementary experiences, when they only have 1, depending on how this option A or B. And then change. It's hard. There's a lot of stuff. There's a lot of details to figure out. Like, even multi-grade means, if you have 2 classrooms, now you have to decide what the process is, and where your student will go. And how do you take parent voices to that? And which teacher do you choose, and how do you do that? There's, it's change. There's stuff to do. Overall, I very much appreciate the challenge to get to do this work. It was really exciting thinking for me. I don't think you get to do this very often in your career, where someone says to you, "Think about students, and what could it look like?" It's been very fun. Actually, yes, it's been fun, so. Did I miss anything? Okay, my colleagues are gonna give me the stink eye if I miss something or nothing. So with that, I would like to introduce Stephanie Giddy Hancock, our Director of Special Ed. Thank you.
Bill just said, "Wherever uncomfortable," and that is not at all public speaking, so. So thank you, Jen. As previously mentioned, we have built these options based upon goals, vision, and work with the board. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to think outside the box. The good news for you is that because I'm not very good at public speaking, it is pretty much kind of one of those things that if I had to choose between swimming with hungry sharks or public speaking, it would really be a toss-up. So I, the good news is that I have it all scripted out for myself, and it's only 6 and 1/2 pages of very large font. So if you have self-regulation challenges, you will be all set for this. Okay, so, sorry, good. So from a special education perspective, these 2 options create more comprehensive, coordinated services for students. This is due to an increase in specialized instruction, improved collaboration between general and special educators, and a focus on grade level clusters. At the District Management Group presentation recently, the presenter asked a pretty interesting question. He said, "Do you want your general practitioner to perform your open-heart surgery, or a cardiothoracic surgeon?" And that's the idea about specialization, and how we can really hone in on doing what is needed for students, and not generalizing, or not being generalists about stuff. Grade level clusters and specialization allow teams to hone in on the particular difficulties students are having, and remediate the issue long before special education instruction is necessary. Furthermore, a special educator would no longer be required to be adept at the entire elementary level, but rather a grade level cluster. The special educator would be able to assist students immediately and more efficiently. They would all be in-house, so you would have support immediately. The aim for special educators is to develop a narrow band of excellence rather than a wide band of generalization. Additionally, a large component of the upcoming shift in special education funding is aimed for this particular reason. We will no longer have to wait until students fail before receiving support from specialists. Having onsite specialists will allow for quicker, more thorough intervention. As Jen recently mentioned, another fantastic benefit is that there would be increased social and academic opportunities. This is very important for students in special education. No longer would a student feel isolated by his or her challenges, but rather would have a small group of peers join him or her for instruction or support. Another essential component of our vision was to improve early intervention for pre-K students. Currently, our Early Childhood Special Education Team serves a large amount of students in 12 to 13 different locations. So you can imagine, you have 1 coordinator and 1 interventionist right now, traveling to 12 to 13 different locations. You can imagine you have a student who has, say, some kind of learning challenge early on, maybe they're not catching on to the foundation's instruction, and you need some support as a classroom teacher. You know the coordinator, and you get her when she can come. This way, they would all be onsite and ready to go as soon as there's an issue identified. As Bill mentioned, having an early learning center with early childhood special staff onsite allows for that intensive early education service to remediate issues and hopefully, prevent the continued need for special education long-term. Assistance and support being immediate is crucial for development. Imagine you're a pre-K student struggling with sensory or fine motor challenges. Rather than the teacher having to wait until the occupational therapist arrives, you can have the person come in right away, you can just, I don't think they'll have beepers or anything, but you can easily access that person, that person will come in, and support, and give the students what they need, and give the teachers what they need. The other important piece that I feel I have to speak to is alignment with District Management Group recommendations. If you've been to any board meetings, you know that they hate acronyms, and probably everybody does. So I did put the acronym there, but I put the words that I take. As you can see by the points on this slide, several are aligned with their recommendations. Just to name a few, playing to educators' strengths through specialization, increasing availability of specialists due to reduced travel time between buildings, and resource sharing. So if there's a program that's needed, or a curriculum, they would be able to share it in the same area. We have the next slide, please. So the next slide is possibilities and challenges. Being a little bit of an overachiever in life and wanting to end on a positive note, I'm having a hard time leaving the challenges, but I'm gonna let it be, because that's our flow. So possibilities. There are also several possibilities within the options presented this evening. A couple of examples include communal consolidated budgets, which allow for pooling of resources, empowering the district to hire reading, math, or other specialists to provide intervention in areas of academic and social emotional needs. Additionally, it creates an increased ability to form in-district programs for students. As Jen previously mentioned, a larger pool of students allows for expanded opportunities for all students. This is due to grouping and shaping resources to focus on the students' needs. This would allow several students to have the ability to transition back to their communities and receive their instruction in a much less restrictive setting. Thoughtful inclusion is a top priority and responsibility of special education teams. And on a tougher note, challenges. Anytime there's change, there also arise challenges. As you can see on my slide, my points are very similar to Jen's. And the basic overview is that change can be hard for everyone. Again, I feel though, that looking through the lens of students, especially students with special needs, I feel that this is a highly beneficial idea for them. Additionally, accommodation of logistical challenges such as buildings, transportation, and staffing can be a bit more challenging for students in special education. Jen talked a little bit about transitions, and that could be, you know, those transitions could be harder for kids with special needs. It is important, however, to keep in mind that transitions would be managed by expertise staff with a depth of knowledge of student needs for that particular developmental stage, so in grade clusters. And they would anticipate transitional needs. I think it's half a page left, guys. As you can see by the number of points in my slide, the benefits and possibilities far outweigh the challenges we would face as a district and community if we were to implement these ideas. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share these ideas from the special education perspective. I would now like to introduce Gloria Garland, who's our Business Manager. It is almost as if I was swimming with sharks, I have to stop.
Alright, here we go. So before we get started looking at the financial results of a potential change in structure, I just want to point out that this is a very broad overview. We really, our focus really has been on the educational goals of the board, that they have to deliver not just a good education, but an outstanding education. So this is almost secondary, really, to what you've seen so far. So as we move through the process with the board direction, we will hone in on, you know, expenses, and be able to identify all of our resources that will show us a better picture. So, okay, so let's recap. So I was at the board a month ago, I think it was, and I presented the first column there. I presented that to you. So if all, if you're a merged district now, in fiscal year '19, with all of your budgets combined, that you would be at $11.2 million for expenses. I didn't put any assumptions, further assumptions into that for expenses. However, I did assume that the equalized pupil count would drop, as we expected to do. So now we move on to fiscal year '20. And so the second bar is, thank you, is if we had all the combined budgets again, and there were no structural changes, I made some assumptions now. So I've made some assumptions that we have some negotiated increases, and we have some healthcare increases. Those were really the 2 that I carried through all of the bars. And you can see, you know, that we, we go up in expenses, obviously, and the gap widens between the excess spending threshold. So that red pink, red line there is the excess spending threshold. So that represents, for, for the audience, really, the excess spending threshold is the cost per student that the state determines, triggers a penalty. So for fiscal year '19, that number is $17,816, cost per student. Okay, so you can see that there's quite a gap there. So when we last met, I told you without any assumptions, that the gap was $636,000 to get to the threshold, to the threshold. So the second bar shows that that gap widens to $756,000. Okay, so now let's take a look at Option A and Option B. So as Bill and So as Bill and Stephanie and Jen described to you these two options, we made some assumptions, and we did keep the same assumptions of negotiated increases and healthcare increases. But now you can see that the gap is much smaller. So the reduction in expenses is $657,000. Just still above the cost per student. As you can see, it's about $18,000 per student. And then in option B, you get basically just barely below the threshold. So this, as I said before, this is really a broad overview. We really have spent much more time speaking to the educational benefits for the student than the money at this point. But we did, we were able to make some assumptions by reconfiguring at this point. So just before I turn it over to Bill to finish up the presentation, I just want to point out that the design target that was on one of his slides before is that gray line there. So the, the design target that the board talked to us about was the statewide average. So the statewide average per pupil cost is somewhere around $15.4, which would mean that your expenses would have to be somewhere around the $9 million mark. So I'm gonna let Bill finish up and speak to that.
So, yeah, as Lori mentioned, the board gave us a design target of the statewide average, and that came to about $2.27 million. And I spent, oh, about two hours looking at what that might entail and realized that it would be unbelievably radical and it would be a really long time, even if it was possible. And so I wanted to respect that the board asked for that design target, and I want to be honest that I, I will do that if you want me to do that, but I'm gonna need a lot more time and a lot more research to even come close to meeting the goals that you have and hit that financial target. So I just wanted to come clean on that. And then before we let the board come back up, I just wanted to emphasize that this is a draft plan, and it's done trying to respect the work of the study committee and deliver upon the vision and goals of the West River Education District Board. We have a forum that will go live tomorrow that will be on the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union website, which will allow, just like the cards tonight, any questions, any comments that you have for the board. The board will talk a little bit about this, but their goal is between now and July 16 to collect feedback and to analyze that feedback, which will guide their work this summer about where they're headed in designing their district. So I so much appreciate you guys listening to us tonight, and we're gonna let the board come back up and ask some clarifying questions and see if we can help you out. Thank you very much.
Okay. First of all, thank you, Bill, Stephanie, Jen, Lori, for your great, hard work. I can't imagine how many hours you guys have into this, you know, total redesign of the district. Again, you know, going back to those, you know, the research, the data that's there. And, you know, it's very apparent that you spent, that you looked at this, again, like what Bill was saying, you know, through the lens of the student. It comes through really clearly that, that you went back to that again and again and again. So we, you, like I said, we have no cards. If you want to jot down a question, we will get to those. The forum goes live tomorrow. We can get to those, we'll, we'll do our best to answer those questions as well. I'd like to see if anybody on the board has a clarifying question. Obviously, a question about what things would look like or could look like or whatever. We don't have any of those answers yet. We just saw this for the first time too, and we're gonna spend the next few months talking about, you know, okay, does this work? And if it does, how does it work? And, you know, what does this mean? And how do we, how do we implement this kind of a thing? Because this is a, this is a lot of change for all of us. So anybody have any questions they want to ask of, of any of Bill, Jen, Lori?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just.
I was just curious what the maximum travel time on a bus would be for the furthest kid at the furthest time?
So I can't tell you exactly, but I can tell you that part of the design of where the schools were placed, we mapped every single kid that we have an address for, so we don't have everybody that are three and four. And we mapped it on the locations of the schools and tried to basically create an environment where the youngest students travel the least amount. It's why Townsend had the K through 2 centered in there because our school system transports students K through 12 on a bus. Three- and four-year-old parents drive. I recognize it's, if you're living in South New Fane, it's a very long trip to Jamaica, but you would be driving if you were a parent. And so there were some outliers in terms of distance. A South New Fane student who's in kindergarten near the Dover border or a Jamaica student near Rossenville are gonna have the longest travel time. But I don't have an actual estimate on the time, but yes, we definitely looked at that.
Anybody else with a question from here? Anybody out there with a clarifying type question?
Marshall Whitman from Williamsville. My biggest concern since you guys did a way thoughtful job. Appreciate that is in the West River vision statement, there's nothing about building emotional intelligence for the kids. And yeah, there's reference that Jen gave several point and examples of the importance of kids being welcomed in special needs, getting in. In my experience as a human being and employer, is that's a crucial piece. In general, people are, you know, reasonably clustered by their development intelligence. So when it comes to emotional intelligence, all over the map, it affects people's work life hugely because it affects their ability to self-regulate, affects their self-discipline, affects their ability to overcome obstacles, affects their ways to collaborate. So especially in the changing world that we're coming up with, these are all more crucial aspects. I'm not just touching on some. So I don't understand why that is not, if not front and center, at least clearly mentioned. It's happily the WCSU addressing it, but why not put that in there so it's unstable? And also, I think it's one of our greatest advantages. From growing up in a large suburban school, there was a really kind of bureaucratic, unfriendly environment. And just from my exposure here, it does feel somewhat like family. So that's a great strength we have. So always building out the expenses is smart, smart.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I, well, I have a number of different things. Go ahead, go ahead. You take the first one, I'll, I'll follow you.
Marshall, I can't tell you how long we went back and forth on the vision statement, length of what should be included. And so this was kind of just called down into what we thought were the most important things. Now, does this mean that it's the end-all and be-all? Does it include everything? I don't think any vision statement should include every single statement or possibility. What happens is we take, they, they take this and they build it out into, you know, the continuous improvement plan, and then they stretch out things and would include things like that that you just mentioned, social and emotional intelligence. So I, I'm all about, and I was all about brevity in the vision statement and then expanding it as you, you know, build it out and continuous improvement plan and other things like that. So, but yes, very important.
Well, you know, echoing Al, we did spend a number of meetings going back and forth on this. And again, you know, to try and keep it brief. And we also, we also got to the point where there are so many important things that you could put in a vision statement that we tried to then cover broader pieces of it in the vision statement and then do things underneath it as a goal. And, you know, I think some of the things that, that the design team did when they fleshed this out, clearly that was in there as part of the, you know, as part of the vision statement, not articulated, but not, you know, it's not, it's not something that we don't want to pay attention to. It just didn't make it into the absolute articulation. But, you know, as you can see, we're dealing with it, so.
It, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
The vision statement is the ultimate blueprint for what then they carry out. As they said, they were following the vision board. So I don't, if they're doing it, then they should be doing it because that's what you guys want. And, and I, I guess I would be amazed if anyone didn't think it's a crucial piece and that's just everyone's experience of, I can't imagine anyone's experience in life is that people who can't emotionally self-regulate well, in addition, in a culture that's so materialistically based, not have that explicitly mentioned, it attacks an extra power. Everyone, wherever you go, is gonna want to talk about academic achievement. But how many places are gonna mention that crucial piece? And I think it really would separate us. And if we're gonna already do it, then why not recognize in our vision statement which is the ultimate blueprint of what we carry out in the vision?
I wasn't gonna speak to the vision statement because that really belongs to the board, but I did want to let you know that part of our continuous improvement plan, which guides all of our schools, we have four goals, and one of them is social and emotional health. And through that, our work, we've made a commitment to working with NFI, which is Dave Melnick, around trauma training for helping our students do a lot of the things you're talking about. And I, I just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost in this too, that is absolutely part of our goals and it is, you know, we talk about literacy, we talk about math, and we talk about social, emotional health. And those enter construction and intervention. And those are our big pieces that really resonate, I think, for me about what makes our SU so special, that that is in every one of our plans in every one of our schools. So that's just what I was gonna share.
If it's crucial and requires time, it should be in the vision statement. Otherwise, what's the point of vision? The vision statement is just your vision. It's the guide to the school. It's important, it should be in it.
Okay, noted. Thank you. Anybody else have a question they want to ask that clarifies any of the information you've heard tonight?
They followed the rules and they're on the cards.
Yeah.
Yeah. None of these are really clarifying. I was skipping through them, none of them are really clarifying. It's, it's much more detailed about, you know, how does Wyndham factor in? Will there be buses for this? And, and all things that, you know, I, I was looking through these questions because if there was something in there that clarified, you know, like, could you go back to this slide and explain what you were meaning here about this opportunity or something like that? We could certainly do it. These are the questions that we need to work for the next several months to answer and to flesh out and to make them reflect the, the needs of the students and the desires of the communities.
Also, even if we're discussing vision, why don't we all have your vision?
Sure. Oh. I'm like. Yeah. Okay. So will there be buses for three- to four-year-olds? For example, a child from South New Fane slash Williamsville to Jamaica? What would a vote in Jamaica look like? As long as the West River Modified Union Education District is looking to make so much change, is there any consideration of starting the day later at the high school level? Do any students, do any studies show benefits to multi-grade classrooms? That actually might be something, I mean, do we know that?
Yes.
I would prefer not to answer it right now, but yes.
Okay. We'll get back to you on that. Any plans to expand the STEMA opportunities? Is that supposed to be STEAM or STEM? Well, it's, it's STEM with an A after it. So I'm like, is that STEAM or STEM?
It's STEM with an A where arts included, so they're both.
That's STEAM.
STEAM.
Okay, gotcha. Will there be a principal in each building? How does Wyndham factor in? Do we concern ourselves with that? Option B, what if Jamaica does not want to buy the school back? Are you ready to become a landlord? Could SU staff move in? Wow, somebody wrote me a book. New Brook Elementary School has spent many years of hard work and dedication to build our Farm-to-School program. This programming means a lot to our community. Our school board has been in full support and has dedicated, has dedicated funding for our program each year for the past three or four years. This past year, we received $20,000 in grant funds for Farm-to-School. How will we protect our interests specifically Farm-to-School at New Brook while merging our boards? My hope is that all schools will adopt Farm-to-School, thus merging will become an opportunity. And the last one that I have is what kind of configuration changes will be made at Leland and Gray to accommodate a middle-school, high-school separation? Sixth graders should not be treated like high, like high students or like high schoolers, I'm sorry. So that's everything we've gotten so far, except for Al's chicken scratch. You wanna read that?
Yes, mine actually was a clarifying question about something on a slide. And of course, it's for Lori, right? What would you expect, right? So I know you made an assumption on equalized pupils, so I just wanted to know what that was. So what, where are we at for FY '19 and then what it was for FY '20?
Actually.
So the, the equalized pupil assumption that I made was 510.08. And that was, what I did was took the equalized pupil for fiscal year 19, which your budgets were built on now, and I dropped that by the 3.5% that is the maximum under Act 46 because you are a merged board, that it can drop. I honestly think it probably would have dropped further than that, but it should hold at that 510.08.
And you actually have projections of that out for several years that you're gonna get to us, right?
I do.
Thank you.
And I will email it to the board and get it up on the board.
You'll email it to us and we'll, and we'll also post it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Heidi.
Joe, could you just clarify what the process will be as you come? Do you have meetings over the summer? Do you look at information? Then what happens?
Well, so we will collect questions, feedback, comments between now and our July meeting. At our July meeting, we'll probably, we'll answer all of those plus start discussing, you know, anything else that comes up as we go through this, as we go through this process. And then we have a retreat a couple weeks after that. That's also a public thing, but it's an all-day-long get-together where we, you know, we'll start saying, you know, at some point, we have to have the conversation of, okay, option A, option B, how does Jamaica feel? Do we even want to do that? What's the, the timeframe? I mean, we have to start running something, you know, in a year and a, in a year and a little more. So if we're going to go with, you know, one of those options, we would have to start talking about how we implement it and what does it look like? And, and, you know, really start answering these questions. And, and, you know, really start answering these questions and a whole lot more about how, how it works. You know, so that by the end, by sometime in the fall, in the late fall, we'd be able to put a budget together to run that next year.
Yeah. I would just say that I would recommend to the board that you guys come up with a plan that decides what you're going to do by the end of September at the latest. Because we do need to build a budget, we do need to have time for transition and things of that nature.
I think we have a published timeline that goes out that far, but I, I, I didn't bring everything.
If you were going to go with option B, you'd have to have a vote of some sort at least.
Oh, yes. Option B would require that the voters of Jamaica decide, they actually have to vote to close their school. No, no. The board can't choose option B. If, if the board was thinking that option B was the best way to go, it, the first thing we would do is have a conversation with the Jamaica board, probably about their feelings around that. And then the Jamaica board would have to go recommend to their town that, you know, this makes sense. And it, it really, probably if we were going to go with option B, we'd have to go with option A for the first year and then phase option B in. And, and it, it's totally in Jamaica's hands. We can't make that happen or force that to happen. We can make a case for why it's the best way to do it, but that's as far as we can go. You're welcome. Yes?
Dear Leland, as we say, South Newfane. So, if option B were something that you favored, but Jamaica would have to vote on that. And if they voted they did not want option B, then our only option is A. Or do you have any other ideas?
We don't have any other options right now. And I, I think, you know, we, if, if we just, if option B was the way we were going to go, I think we would know pretty quick. We would, it wouldn't necessarily have to go to a vote of the town to know whether or not that was going to be a good idea or not. I mean, the Jamaica board may or may not have some thoughts on this. I suspect they do. And the town may, I mean, at one point, the town actually talked about consolidating with Townsend. And I know those two boards met to talk about consolidating their schools and putting them all in one building. And, and, you know, there have been some ongoing discussions. But, you know, again, it's, it's in the hands of Jamaica, you know. We, we can't cause that to happen.
It, that really does depend on the town.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that one.
For the West River Education District, it takes a vote of the town to close a school. For as long as those articles are enforced, it takes a vote of the town to close the school.
So, one option will take the same way that, and then option A. But if you decided not to with option A, things would, it's a possibility to stay as it is right now. Is that, is it not an option?
Yes, I, I guess that's an option.
Well, I think people are just wondering, if you only present one option that's really feasible, then what is there to talk about?
What? I don't think option B is not feasible. It's just to, to have option B work, it requires a little more work. And to see if there are some people, to see if people are willing to take that bold step and make that decision. You know, I don't, and, and one option is presented, but there's nothing that says that those options can't be modified and tweaked and, and changed around to see what makes, what, you know. If something about the option doesn't make sense, then, you know, we have a little bit of time to figure out what we're going to do. I'm not sure that's clarifying. We just, we, we have why Jamaica? Not sure that's clarifying. Is there a rationale for Jamaica? So, they want to share?
The rationale is exactly like the rationale for the busing. It's just drawing a map around where the students cluster and looking at that. There's no intention other than data.
Anybody else? More questions? I really encourage you to go on the website. All of us, all of the board members have their emails published on the, on the WCSU website. Some of us serve on multiple boards. You can find us under a bunch of places. If you think of something, email us. If you go to the link, you know, get, put as much, give us as much feedback as you possibly can as we have these next conversations. Because, you know, that, that's, you know, you're, you're helping guide us as we do this. And it, and it's not, it's easier not to do this in a vacuum, so. Anything else to add, folks?
Joe, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Going back to Heidi. So, to me, it sounds like, like how you said, that option B is kind of out of our hands unless Jamaica agrees to it. So there's really only one choice.
Well.
That's what, that's what's been presented, is that one choice of recombining all the kids.
There's one, that's one starting point.
But what's the other one?
Well, option B is really just a riff on option A where we ended up taking a school out of the equation.
Right, but you can't do that based on the articles. So what is another, so there really is only one.
Well, we can, we can, we can have option, leave it the same the way it is and just continue to do what we've always done and, and. Or we could have option D, which is the scorched earth version of, you know, the $2.2 million cuts where we change things and, and, you know, run essentially probably one school. We're, we're trying to, we're trying to have, you know, option A is not sort of carved in stone as the option, but it's a starting point to at least talk about changes, to redesign a district to give the kids the expanded opportunity, more content, more, you know, more of what studies and data are showing us makes for better education.
So, when you were building all of this, I, I assumed that when we were talking about data, you were looking at other places. And can you speak to how this has worked in other districts where they might have gone to our system to, to that system?
So, actually, we took the tact of just being free to design it based on the lens of the student. And we did not look at any other models to build upon. Ironically, during it, of course, you start asking that exact same question. So, yeah, I mean, there's some examples around the state and, but I have not dove deep into their 10-year outcomes. But, no, we just took the, the license that the board gave us of create a system that meets the study committee's recommendations, meets your vision, meets your goals, and tries to approach the design target.
So, I did. Because it's me. So I, what I did was I looked at what's considered the highest performing school districts in Vermont. And I looked for commonalities amongst them. Pre-K was one of the common themes in our highest performing districts. As well as middle schools, starting at sixth grade, with one exception, which was this, is it Riverdale? That splits between New Hampshire and Vermont is one performing districts, high performing districts. I looked, and they all had components of social emotional health, developmental learning, and strong academic focus. And PD days that were nine or more, dedicated just to PD. So those are the commonalities I looked at from my lens, or the districts I looked at.
Yes, go ahead.
I remember you mentioned earlier about Wyndham. So, could you repeat what you said about Wyndham, where that school would fall into this?
Wyndham doesn't fall into this plan at all. Wynd, well, no, I'm sorry. Wyndham continues to be a member of the Leland and Gray Union, which was rolled into this. And the Wyndham students continue to attend Leland and Gray, or, yeah, continue to attend Leland and Gray for grades seven through 12, just like they do now.
Does that still, school, say function?
Wyndham has, well, the state, the, the Agency of Education recommended that Wyndham join the West River Education District. They petitioned, even after they petitioned for an alternative governance structure. They have their own path now to follow to join or not join. And the final decision is made by the board, State Board. I mix Agency of Education and State Board all the time. The final decision is made in November by the State Board. But the only decision the State Board can make with respect to Wyndham is to reaffirm the, the request that the West River Education District accept the Wyndham board into it. You know, they can't, they can't, you know, it's, it's really in their hands. And, and, you know, so they have a number of options until that plan is finalized. And, you know, probably we do them, you know, we'll let those play out for them and, and, you know, not try and have a hand in what they're going to do. And as the West River Board right now, will plan for our students going forward. And then what happens in November, we may have to adjust the plan a little bit. Anybody else? Well, again, thank you for coming, thank you for your feedback.
I actually have a question as a board member from Newfane, from the New Brook Board.
Sure.
Okay. If we're going to have all our fifth graders, for example, in one school, from all the towns. I know at New Brook.
What? I need a microphone. Why?
Alrighty. This is a question from a New Brook Board member now. I want to know if, example, our fifth graders, Camp Kiwaden is part of our paid-for instruction in our budget? I can't speak for Townsend or Jamaica if it's in, built into their budget or if it's fundraised.
That's not a write-it-down question, that's not a clarifying question.
No, 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 no. This is, this is a question for this board, is that we need to think about. These towns feel this is important when they pass their budgets. So, how do we meld that?
Okay, so I just wrote Kiwaden for you. Townsend has a sixth-grade trip. Newfane has a sixth-grade trip. Townsend goes to Kiwaden, New Brook goes to Kiwaden. Every school, Jamaica goes to Kiwaden.
They all go, but I don't know if it's part of all their budgets. You're not understanding. So, how do we, how do we make this equitable, not equal? That's my question. Not a question we're going to take up this evening.
Jen?
Just as part of that, it is part of the, the articles was that no, no student would lose opportunities in the merger. I mean, that was part of our agreement when we did the merger. So, and we discussed that exact, exact topic when we were doing the merger. That we wouldn't be removing opportunities that a school had, we would be adding it for the other students. Did I remember that correctly? Yes.
Great. All work that this board is going to have to do in the next few months. All right. On more?
Yeah. When is the next meeting?
July 16th.
In August, is that where?
Third Monday of every month. And maybe at 7:30, we have to take that up real quick. Yeah, oh, yeah, they'll all be warned, they'll be on the website. You know, the meetings will continue to be televised. We, one of the things this board may start talking about as we start developing this is how to get the word out more. You know, how do we publish some of this stuff? Where are their blog posts? I think, you know, if we get good feedback from the link, we'll keep, we'll keep making the link available and keep looking for feedback. Okay. All right, so, the next, oh, under, we've, we've done the legislative update, it's still under new business. At the last Leland and Gray, we, okay. The Leland and Gray Board has struggled since this merger with getting a quorum. We have probably not had a quorum more often than we have had a quorum. And it's becoming very difficult to attend to board business. And one of the suggestions that was made was to change their meeting night to the third Monday of the month and basically run the Leland and Gray Board meeting for the first half hour before this meeting from 7:00 to 7:30. There's not a lot of business that has to be done generally, but it would allow us to get a quorum. So at the last meeting, the Leland and Gray Board voted to change their meeting night to the third Monday of every month from 7:00 to 7:30, providing the West River Board was willing to change their meeting to 7:30 so that the Leland and Gray Board could have that time slot. If it doesn't work for us, we can say no. But if it does, I think the, and, and as Chair of the Leland and Gray Board, I commit to getting it out on time. We're not going to be starting our meeting at 8:00. We will end meeting promptly at 7:30 and call this one to order. We would need a motion to change our meeting time.
And this would just be as long as the Leland and Gray Board is?
It would be until the Leland and Gray Board dissolves.
Go ahead. We can discuss it after.
Right.
All right, go ahead. Okay, make your motion.
All right, I'll make the motion to move the time from 7:00 to 7:30 for the West River Board meeting.
Is there a second? All right. It's been moved and seconded to change the time from 7:00 to 7:30 for the West River Education District meetings. Ken, you want to discuss this?
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
Well, when we set everything up back in April, we had said that this is going to be our time and night for the meeting. Well, we have to go back and change that any other way than just with a motion here. Just right here.
We just have to warn them.
Okay.
We make the motion, we agree that it's going to work for us, and we warn the meetings accordingly. It's not, it's, it's, part of it is that Emily is on this board and on Leland and Gray. I'm on this board and on Leland and Gray. And Drew's on this board and on Leland and Gray. So that's halfway to our quorum right there for Leland and Gray, just by showing up for this meeting at that time. And when we had this motion got made, the discussion was that, you know, that was, that was better. You know, people would try really hard to make the quorum and, and, you know, we're, we're getting there. But, you know, that board understands that the meetings are going to have to be short and that. It's, it's only, yeah, it's maybe for a year, so. Policy Committee can meet, you know. In another, Policy Committee can meet in another room. We'll get you one. Yeah, we would go from 7:30 to, we would go from 7:30 to probably eight, probably nine. Probably nine. I won't lie. No, 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 budgets are going to sail through with this new structure. All right, so, any further discussion on that motion? Okay. All in favor of moving the meeting time from 7:00 to 7:30, still on the third Monday of every month? Please say aye. Opposed?
Right here. I oppose.
All right. Abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you, everyone. The other thing is, I guess, we were scheduled to have our retreat on the 19th. Bill, do you have another date that works better? Because he's gotten some feedback that people are going to have a tough time making it.
The beginning of the next week.
Everyone run for their calendar.
No, no. No, we're in July. Wednesday? What's that, the 23rd? 25th?
Okay, so we were set up for the 19th. You're saying the week of the 23rd is better for people? Sometime like 23, 24, 25?
So like the 25th. How about the 25th?
How does July 25th work for the retreat versus July 19th? Yeah, July 19th is now a Townsend special meeting that I wouldn't mind going to. Townsend special meeting about zoning. They warned it. This board's going to talk about interim zoning. So anyway, so July 25th is okay with people? We have consensus on that?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion or can we just do it?
I would make a motion.
Okay, so somebody want to make a motion to change the retreat from...
I will make a motion to change the retreat from the 19th to the 25th.
And I'll second it. Oh, good.
Thank you, Lindsay and Ken. Any discussion on that at all?
What time?
Nine to five.
Nine to five on the 25th now.
And where?
Well, I now got to go find a new place, but I've had it at the... At Mount Snow.
Oh, we're going to have it at Mount Snow?
Yeah.
So I think I can... Wednesday, I probably can make that.
That makes it more... All right, so any more discussion on that, folks?
Oh, I just want to say, actually, it'd be really good because on the 16th, we're getting the feedback. It would give time. You guys will be telling my office to get you something by the 25th, so...
Right, so we can really dig in that day, structured, and come out of there with some clear ideas and a lot of things discussed. Okay, so all in favor of moving the retreat from July 19th to July 25th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll say aye. What do you say? You got those up there?
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. That... Oh. We need to pull the minutes out of the consent agenda just to change a few things. So we need a motion to pull the minutes out of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to pull the minutes.
Okay.
I move...
Thank you.
I move we table the whole consent agenda. How's that?
That puts it to the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
We'll table it the next meeting.
Want to second that motion too? All right. All in favor of tabling the consent agenda to the next meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Any other business we have to discuss tonight, folks?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.